Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could just please remain standing. Just ask for one more silence for members and their families of the Tree of Life congregation in Pittsburgh for that horrible tragedy, as well as we've lost former mayor of that wonderful village Frank Gloria from a couple of weeks ago. And just on that note, on behalf of me and my family, I thank you all for your expressions and the wonderful things you've done for our family. So I would ask you all, please remember all these people in your prayers. And I thank you very much. Tonight, we will have our proposed board meeting. We will have a special event tonight. We will be opening for the board meeting with one resolution, and then we will take a break to swearing, even for the sergeant, which we are very excited about. And then after that, we'll continue the board meeting, of course. After that, the board will need extra boards, and then open up the floor for any of our residents who have any issues. With that, Ms. Walsh, will you begin?
Thank you, Mayor Longbody. I would ask the board to authorize the promotion of Police Officer John Wilson to the rank of sergeant, effective immediately at a contractual base salary of
I'm going to offer that resolution and also state that I can remember when John first came on the police force, because I was the prosecutor for the village. I remember prepping him for his first trial. He followed every instruction that I gave him. And I want to say it's been a pleasure to watch him through the years, the past 28 years, working as a police officer on the village. And thank you. So I will offer that presentation. And I'll have to say that.
With that, Ms. Walsh, unless there's any discussion on that? That's very good, John. There's no discussion. Would you like to consult with the police force?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara. And Mayor Longbody.
Many thanks from our village. With that, I...
Motion's carried.
With that, John, I would ask you to please come up. I would also like our police commissioner, the entire board, down, as well as Nicole. And it's a little time giving it up, but I would love it if you, if you'd now, and I mean the rest of the families, if you guys would come up. John, I'm going to ask you to raise your hand if you agree with me. I, please be clear, do solemnly swear to what is called the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of New York. The laws and ordinances of the Incorporated Village of Floro Park. And I further promise to faithfully execute the duties of sergeant of the Floro Park Police Department to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations, John. Actually, you're going to ask Nicole to hear me, please. There is a pen.
There was also pictures that were coming out of their faces.
There is a pen. Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you. Yes, I would ask you to do today, everybody here, family, and we'd like to have a picture of your hands. So if you could, yes.
Yes, you watched it wasn't announced. John, now that we know what should they make, they can do that.
Sorry about that, John.
Sorry about that, John. We didn't make that up.
I would ask the board to approve the minutes of October 16, the regular board meeting, and the public hearing minutes of application to 246 Jericho Turnpike, which is also held on October 16. I would ask the board to approve the work sessions that were held on October 20th, October 30th, November 1st, and November 5th, 2018.
So, any discussion? All those in favor, I oppose, this can.
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of accounts payable consisting of the following. General fund, $1,568,699.19. Swimming pool fund, $511,014.30. Capital fund, $892,534.23. For a grand total of $2,972,247.72. I want the resolution.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbody. I would ask the board to ratify the request of the Knights of Columbus to change the date of the Radigan Run to November 10, due to inclement weather that was on October 27th, subject to the certificate of insurance.
So move. Second, any discussion? All those in favor, I oppose, this can.
I would ask the board to approve Nicole Millia as a new member of the Floro Park Fire Department, having received awesome clearance from the Nassau County Sheriff's Office, a background check from the Floro Park Police Department, and a medical clearance from Dr. Vogel. I want that resolution.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbody.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the request of Septa to use the recreation center's fields to hold their annual football game for special education students on Saturday, November 17, from May 30 to 1:00 p.m., pending the receipt of certificate of insurance.
I'll hold that resolution. I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, I oppose, this can.
I would ask the board to approve the application of KMA of 246 Jericho Turnpike, Floro Park, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in this decision and resolution and review of the conditions by the Village Attorney.
I'll hold that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald. Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbody.
I thought I had not as enthusiastic as you.
I would ask the board to accept the irrevocable letters of retirement from Police Lieutenant Michael Suffey and Police Sergeant Ronald Gadliano, effective November 30, 2019.
I'll hold that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbody.
Again, many thanks on behalf of our grateful village, as well as best wishes to them for their future, for them and their families, and for our... Motion's carried.
I would ask the board to approve the request of the Hans Family Foundation to use the recreation center on Friday, day 16 of 2019, for race registration and the use of Centennial Gardens on Saturday, May 17, 2019, for their annual 5K race and fundraiser, pending the receipt of certificate of insurance.
Can we just change this date to 2019?
I guess so.
So move. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, all those in favor, I oppose, this can.
I would ask the board to approve request of the CSEA unit to use the recreation center for their annual holiday party on Friday, December 14, from 12 noon to 2:00 p.m.
So...
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, I oppose, this can.
I would ask the board to ratify the hiring of Jennifer Patterson as Library One at the Floro Park Library at a contractual rate of pay of $52,058, as she successfully cleared pre-employment medical screens.
I'll hold that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbody.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize a refund of $135 to Emily Golden, which represents a pro-rated deduction and can give this membership pool at the Floro Park.
I want that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbody.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the mayor to sign letters of identification to PSENG and Horizon for the village to use the utility poles to hang and retool holiday lights and decorations during the holiday season.
I'll hold that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbody.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the request of AAA Taxi for taxi cab licenses to Michael Patello and Thomas Gilroy, and the Glenvale Taxi Raphael Serrato, with each applicant having received a background clearance from the Floro Park Police Department.
So move. Second, any discussion? All those in favor, I oppose, this can.
I would ask the board to ratify the termination paid out in accordance with the PBA collective bargaining agreement for the following retired police officers: Lieutenant Michael P. Reed, Sergeant Joe Joseph Oswald, and police officers John Prilly and John Merron. I want that resolution.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbody.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the hiring of four police officers selected from the Nassau County Civil Service Commission's list, namely Anthony J. Cerusso, Helen Bala Murphy, Michael Baller, and Monty Puleo, subject to background investigation by the Nassau County Police Department and approval by Nassau County Civil Service Commission.
I'll hold that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbody.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the hiring of Niffle Wolf as a full-time neighborhood aide in the police department at a CSEA contractual rate of $35,174, subject to the approval of Nassau County Civil Service Commission. I want that resolution.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbody.
Aye.
I would ask the board to avoid the Department of Public Works uniform bid to Goldman Brothers and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
I'll hold that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbody.
So with that, we'll go to order points. W. Mayor, can I have a show?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, with regards to DPW, the locust tree planting has been completed. We planted 43 trees with water calibers that we typically plant during our twice-annual plantings, and the staghorn will be placed next in the next week or so. Heritage block may only be nearly complete, there's just some additional plantings that are planned. Speaking of plantings, a number of them occurred on the park of Jericho and Plainfield, along with the median entrance of the village of Jericho, circling the market in fact, also provided by DeSantis' progressive initiative, and getting those complete. And lastly, with regards to the developed or repaved parts of the Sisbee that were damaged during construction of the new homes on that block, I would like to thank Superintendent Swysby for ensuring that this was completed. With regards to Belmont, there's been no substantial releases or additional film in the past two weeks since that closing. I would still like to encourage residents to continue to review the documents and letters that the village posted on our website. And additionally, tomorrow night, Commissioner McCall still will be discussing the potential taxi traffic and policing, a potential development at the Southside Civic Meeting. And separately, tomorrow night, the Westside Civic Association Meeting, I will be going through our recent presentation on the project and its potential impact on the overall village. Both of those meetings are full building, and I encourage all residents to join and continue to be informed about this potential project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening. For the Floro Park Fire Department, I'd like to thank Chief Staff and all the members of the Floro Park Fire Department for their special tributes to lifelong residence firefighter Robert Bobby Stillman and Mayor Frank Gloria. The department served as honor cards, conducted services, and displayed the American flag on the ladder of arches to express the admiration and appreciation of the entire village's extraordinary work and their efforts. The interior renovations on the active firehouse on Atlantic Avenue have been just about completed. There is a new, larger, bright red door on the front that will accommodate the new, up-to-date fire truck, which has arrived from this underdeveloped, final new vehicle prep car. It is expected that the new fire truck will be in Floro Park and service in the coming weeks. In the meantime, the current active truck, which is 25 years old, will get into an operation. The Floro Park Fire Department is wishing all the best with our new pumper truck and is thanking all of our village administration, Department of Public Works, and community for their support and work with this important safety addition to our facility. And for the Public Chamber of Commerce, I would like to ask all to support our local businesses on Christmas Saturday, which is on November 24th, two days after Thanksgiving. The villages of Floro Park and Store Manor have both waived your parking meter fees on that day and encourage all villagers to shop at Floro.
Thank you very much. Trustee Chang.
For the library, on November 1st, the library started its own amnesty type program, billed food for fines, where they will waive the fine dues up to $5 per library card holder in exchange for donation of non-perishable food items. This food will be donated to our Lady of Pinkberry Food Country, and I want to make a reminder to everybody that donations will be accepted even if you do not have a credit to your bank. The police department, by the end of this month, our police department, through retirement, will be losing six of its most senior officers, two tenants, two sergeants, and two police officers. This represents over 200 years of experience, police experience, in our village. In a department our size, rarely does this much turnover occur. However, in the course of these retirements, our remaining officers will have an opportunity for advancement in rank and to further their training and supervising roles. Board has been conducting numerous interviews of replacement of these retirees and promotions within the department. This is an exciting time for the members of our police force. I am certain that the changes in personnel will only build on the excellent service provided by our department. We are all extremely thankful for their service and the safety of our village. For the third track, it has slowed down because the bell is most of the transfer is very busy over there. As I am sure all of us have witnessed, real construction for the third track force, sorry, track work is about to start. First, Tyson, South Tyson Avenue. As you know, supporting structure for the third track at South Tyson Avenue will be between the main line and the other bridges. A new bridge between the branch openings has to be constructed. Phase one of the project will concentrate on the opening from the east side of Jill Avenue to the west side of South Tyson. Eighteen parking spots under the railroad in that area, and four west side South Tyson Avenue metered parking spots will be temporarily eliminated. The contract is half-divided, alternate parking at 50 Carnation, better known to be as better than move, now known as storage, postings. Thirty spots are available for anyone who has a village under railroad parking permit. To use the spots at 50 Carnation, please enter off Lily Street. These spots are on a first-come, first-served basis, as is all parking under the railroad. Two-way traffic will still be maintained, but please remember the lanes will not be as wide as they are presently. The sidewalk on the west side of South Tyson Avenue will be closed to pedestrians. All pedestrians must utilize the sidewalk on the east side of South Tyson Avenue. Additional stop signs and signs directing vehicles to the Lily Street parking have been installed. The Floro Park Borough School District has been notified, notified of plans, and they plan to send a letter to all John Willey Child School students and parents on Thursday. This phase is expected to take approximately four months.
Trustee Chiara.
Up at the rec center, most of the sports activities at the rec center are either complete or near completion. All Little League has ended their season recently. Youth Council Football is at its midway point, and the Floro Parks most association hockey has recently started their season. The recreation programs at the full center are also at the midway point, and registration for the next season will be posted in the village items shortly. The tiny town regular renovation is doing well, with the new PVC fencing being installed today. It looks really great. Pictures of the project and review on the village website. We are all anxious for its completion. On Saturday, November 17th, at 11:00 a.m., we will have a ceremony to place Bill McQuaid's name on Memorial Wall at the recreation center. Bill was a very active volunteer for Little League Hockey and the Titans Football. Please join us in recognizing Bill for all that he contributed to our youth and our community. Just to remind you, as of Monday, 12, the winter hours of the park don't affect, which are 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And also, the hours of Centennial Gardens are currently 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, sir, very much. Okay, now for my report, I just want to echo Trustee Chang's comments regarding the police department. You know, we did lose a number of our senior police personnel this week. Yes, we did lose some great people who gave a lot of time to our village and worked very hard on behalf of the residents here. So I just wanted to thank them again one more time for all of the years, the efforts that they put forth to protect us and make this a very safe place. It really has been a wonderful, wonderful community all these years, continues to be a wonderful community, and one of the main reasons is the efforts of our police and our emergency services for the things that they do. So I want to thank all of those gentlemen who are leaving, and again, for those who are going to be moving up and those who are going to be hiring, and that they will be learning from the expertise of the people who are there, our police commissioner, as well as all the people who probably have come before them, because that's who they learn from. So again, I want to thank them. In regard to the fire department, I want to just echo Trustee Lynn Pombana in regard to thanking the truck committee and all the members who worked hard on getting this happening. Yes, it was delivered this week. It really is a wonderful piece of equipment. The efforts to make modifications to the firehouse, it's all on a volunteer basis. These are people who work day in and day out as a volunteer for this community to make things like this happen. So I want to thank them for all of their efforts, and you will be seeing the fire truck around town, hopefully just in parades and for just other services like that, and not having to show up at your house or anybody else for other reasons. We don't wish that on anybody by any means. The one other, I just want to make one other comment. You received a thank you letter. The Floro Park Lions Club, which has been active in our community since 1925, probably one of the longest-serving charitable organizations in our community, and they do all kinds of wonderful work, not only in our community, but other places as well. Their charter is now being displayed in the Floro Park Library, and I think it's a wonderful thing, because I hope that reminds everybody of the wonderful work that is done by so many groups in our community, and I want to thank the Lions Club for everything that they do, day in and day out, not only for us, but for many of the other communities around. Saturday, you heard in our reports and in the resolutions, that Saturday is the Radigan Run, has been rescheduled. I invite everybody to please come down and cheer on all the people who are running, raising money for various charities there. It begins at the Knights of Columbus, is named after the former trustee, Jim Radigan, who I had the great pleasure of working with. He was an absolutely terrific person. His counsel, his ability to manage, his ability to give us guidance, and look to make sure that Floro Park was a great place, is tremendous, and the run is named after him, and I urge everybody, please come down and help cheer on those people who are running to raise money for various organizations. Lastly, I would remind everybody that Sundays, Veterans Day, are the absolute reason why we are allowed to have this meeting, why we are allowed to live in a great place we call Floro Park and a great country we call America. On Monday, we will be celebrating Veterans Day, and they are not doing it on Sunday, they have moved it to Monday in an effort to work with our local churches as well. It will begin with a brief ceremony and parade down to Ob Avenue at about 10 to 11, then starts, ending at Memorial Park with these services for Veterans Day at 11, beginning at, what is 11:11, at 11 o'clock. So I would ask, please, everybody, if you can be there, that is something that's very important. I would ask you, please, thank our veterans every day for what they do, because we can't do what we do anywhere without their help and without the foundation that they have laid for us. I would also, just as always, Felix, and just as Max made, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Christopher, as always, thank you. I know we have a new member of our press here. I don't know who you are, if you could tell us. Jed, thank you again for being here. We appreciate that. Thank you for taking the time and spending it with us. So I welcome you all, and thank you again, always, for everything. With that, I will close the meeting and ask for a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, I oppose. And with that, I will open the floor to any of our residents who have any questions or issues.
Me, how are you? My name is John Salwin. I live on 33 Carnation Avenue. I was here in May. We're going to jump over in the garage across the street from the center to Birch. I'd like to know what the status is and what's going on with the city.
I am going to turn that over to the police commissioner, if I could.
He was given notice of violation, which I think I indicated to you.
By, I'm sorry, by Village's apartment.
Prosecutor attorney, yes, she's writing a lawsuit to a woman that owns the property.
I had spoken to prosecutor Walsh regarding that. So she gets someone, he stays there, he's got to have it worked, and I'm asking that.
Well, who else has had a divorce, someone else?
I'm sorry?
Who else has had a divorce?
She's just, he stayed in the garage.
What happens if she's not here? She's going to have to vacate the garage.
So how long does this take? Because from what I'm being informed is, he's got kerosene in there, stay warm now. So, I mean, what, again, what am I supposed to do? I know, I know there's other things going on in that garage, which I spoke to the police commissioner who belongs to, which I'll leave between he and I, that nobody will want to go across the street from the house, where you have a 12-year-old and a five-year-old daughter.